This time, I'll call the September 7th, 2021 council meeting to order. At this time, the Honorable Tom Aldette from District One will lead us in invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we come together today for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion. I pray also for the safety of our military, law enforcement, and all other first responders. Lastly, I pray for God's guiding hand over the United States of America. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, if the following individuals would come forward to be sworn in for oath of office of newly appointed boards and commissions. Victoria Knolf, Catawba Mental Health Board. Angie Clinton, Bethel Lake Wiley Land Acquisition and Preservation Parks District Board. Penny Shepherd, York County Cultural and Heritage Commission, District One. And Flint Holbrook Stormwater Appeals Board. And as you make your way to the front, do want to say on behalf of the council, we appreciate your service. We can't do the work that we do without volunteers like you, and you oftentimes do not get any credit and don't get thanks for the hard work that you do, and we do want to recognize you for that, and we appreciate your service. At this time, we move into our public forum portion of the council meeting. For folks who have signed up on the list, just to let you know, you have two minutes, and if you'll look up at the top, it'll start blinking when your two minutes is up. I absolutely detest cutting people off, but I have to do that, so if you could please monitor that and help me avoid having to cut you off when you come up, I would be most appreciative. When you come up, if you would also please state your name and address for the record before you get started. Jean McCallum. It just blinks.
My name is Jean McCallum. I am recruiter for the South Carolina Youth Challenge Academy. I was curious if anybody here has heard of that before? Anybody? That's why I'm here, I'm going to try to spread the word. We are funded by the South Carolina National Guard, so I'm a state employee, and we are for troubled, or you might say at-risk youth, specifically sixteen- to eighteen-year-old teens that are struggling with high school. They may be dropped out already or on the verge of dropping out, maybe they've fallen behind because of the COVID learning. Could be a number of issues, single-parent homes, just need to get out of the neighborhood, need more discipline and structure. We are funded 100% by the Guard, the National Guard Bureau out of DC and the South Carolina National Guard. So that's the thing we want to share with your constituents, is that it's 100% tuition-free, and that's because of the funding. And the young people, basically, it is a semi-military model. We're not recruiting people for the military, although a lot of our cadets end up going into service, but we just use that for the structure and discipline. So it's about building the person, teamwork, discipline, learning how to follow through, how to do the right thing when you're supposed to do it. But the number-one focus is academic, GED. You can actually graduate without obtaining the GED. We have a twelve-month follow-up, but our residential program is five-and-a-half months. So we just really want to share this information, because we're not on TV and radio. We're trying to reach out, especially after this year with education, the way it has been affected by COVID. The young people, basically, and it is male and female, we have eighty-eight cadets right now. These are all students that are residents of South Carolina, so that is the requirement. So it's open to everybody across the state. Your area, in fact, York District Three, School District Three, I believe that was one of the, yes, Mr. Winkler? Some of, I had some data that you have about a 3% dropout rate from the high schools, only about 156 students from the school year before COVID. So we, actually, that's in the top, number eight of the top eighteen, from the stats from the Department of Education, State Department of Education. So we were actually up here at Summerfest, we had a table set up, trying to spread the word. We are going to be at the National Guard Armory in Rock Hill on September 25th, doing a recruitment event, starting at eight in the morning. But I am going to leave the information and all in the packages here, so that you could share that, we'd appreciate it, with your constituents, on your webpages, social media.
Thank you.
Get the word out through churches.
Thank you, Ms. McCallum. We appreciate it, and we'll circulate that. One other thing I do want to make sure that folks understand in the public forum session is this is not a time to engage with council, and we oftentimes feel like, I want to explain that, so that if you ask us a question, this is our time to listen to you. We don't engage and answer those questions, this is our time simply to listen, so I don't want you to think we're rude if we don't respond back. Next up, Erin Morgan.
Erin Morgan, live at 1918 Leesburg Drive. Thank you for this opportunity, appreciate your consideration of the matter, dealing with Lake Point Academy. First, I want to speak as a community leader. I'm a pastor of Redeeming Grace Church that's on Charlotte Highway. We operate on perhaps the busiest street in the county. Each Sunday, we let our congregation out just around noon and empty onto that busy street of 49. Additionally, a few days ago, we had a funeral service that literally stopped traffic for a funeral procession. And we will have events like that and others that empty our parking lots onto that highway. There hasn't been, nor seems to be, abnormal difficulty for our people getting into the natural flow of traffic. We don't hire any assistants, other than that funeral procession, for our people as they exit the church parking lot, and as a pastor and also our elders, we take that into consideration if our people say there's a problem with the traffic and the reasonable flow of the cars getting into the rhythm of transportation. Lake Point Academy operates a lot like a church in this way, is that it has different activities throughout the week, of which people will be coming and going, which all but eliminates the chances of a bottleneck, because it's not just a one-time event. There are different traffic patterns, difficulties that occur, but none of which are going to cause major problems. Even when the school lets out at the actual end of the day, not everyone leaves at the same time, as being an educator of this school and now a parent, there are many things that cause people to stick around, like sports and clubs and tutoring, and that also further decreases the potential for high-traffic volume in that area. Secondly, I speak as a resident. I live next to Greg Road Elementary in the neighborhood of Longley Estates, have lived there since 2006, and have felt no impact from Greg's Elementary whatsoever, and they empty their parking lots pretty much at the same time every day. Thirdly, I'm a parent of a sixteen-year-old driver, and makes me incredibly nervous, more nervous than I am right now, standing in front of you. Given his age, his inexperience, and my sensibilities as a parent, my wife and I do limit his driving, and we would be thrilled, and still are, allowing him to drive three days a week to the school, and we wouldn't be allowing him if it was a danger or a safe, or not a safe place for him to drive.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan.
I don't believe it's negative. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Park Gillespie.
Give him two minutes to lead. Public school teacher, that's great. Park Gillespie, 1938 Leesburg Drive, Clover, South Carolina. Good to be here with you all. I've been involved in public and private education since 1989, and as a history teacher, thanks for your service, those who just took the oath, that was just great. I love that, and thank you for your service. I just want to say that I'm honored that Lake Point is here, as somebody who has had kids in both public and private school, and I'm still a public school teacher, I'm grateful for the opportunity to have that option. I'm also grateful that I had the chance on occasion to take them to school, and that has been happening for ten years. And what I have found is this, that there has, as busy as 49 is, there has never been an issue getting in or getting out of those facilities. Like Erin, I live not far from him, four doors down, something like that, there's one way in and one way out of our community, and we've never had a complication with a school that's orders of magnitude larger than Lake Point is. So I guess my concern is that, is for people who may be concerned, it truly isn't going to be one. It hasn't been, and it won't be. And I told myself I would make this very quick, so I have, but I hope that you'll rule in favor of it, and it was really good to see some nice faces, so. Any questions? I didn't think so, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gillespie.
Have a lovely day. So I just gave somebody's message back.
Melody Miller.
In order to stay in two minutes, I'm going to read mine. I'm Melody Miller, 1815 Sharea Road, York, South Carolina. As a longtime resident of York County and employer, both as a president of Vicimadeus, which is one of York County's top employers, and president of the Board of Lake Point Academy, I believe we all have a responsibility to support, serve, nurture the growth of our communities. And with that in mind, a university study that listed the ten most important things that make a community great, part of that was education, it was service to the community, the options the community has. And on education, our approach is quite different, in that students attend on an alternating schedule, which significantly reduces the impact of traffic. We continue to talk about that, because that was one of the concerns raised by the Glens. A study in details has been submitted. We teach our subject matter from a Christian worldview. We strive to demonstrate these commands through various service endeavors in the community. Specifically, we have already worked to improve the Glens entrance, and we have made significant changes to our plans after listening to some of the concerns with, from the families at the Glens, and we've also submitted those changes. Our education approach is classical. I'm going to quote Aristotle. "It is the mark of an educated mind to be able to entertain a thought without accepting it. Educating the mind without educating the heart is no education at all." And so out of that, our LPA graduates now serve as doctors, nurses, missionaries, teachers, and other both blue-collar and white-collar jobs in the community here. So finally, I just wanted to say that parents in a strong, supportive community deserve to have options for educating their children. We do and will bring more jobs, education, and opportunities to York County, and I believe our request strengthens this community by fulfilling much of what people seek in strong, thriving communities. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Jennifer Shortridge.
Hi, Jennifer Shortridge, 211 Carolina Crossing. So I'm speaking on behalf of the HOA at the Glens, and just one thing that's not up for debate is that the character, the quality of the school, no one's debating that. I think our request is pretty simple, is that we would like to have a Tier Two traffic analysis based on the current enrollment figures, as well as the fact that the infrastructure is just a little bit different than what it is at their current setup. So I think that, you know, for us as residents, there's about sixty-plus homes, over a hundred people. This is going to impact us at peak hours. I think the enrollment right now is around 210, which basically necessitates a Tier Two analysis. I, in my profession, I'm a mergers and acquisitions tax professional. We like to do lots of planning, we like to do it once, we like to get it right, and we all like to avoid heartache on the backend of our transactions. That means efficient structuring, and I think Tier Two analysis is what we need to see what the impact is to everybody. Everyone that spoke, I appreciate their point of view, but the way that our setup is, is that we are a two-lane highway, it's a T-intersection, and there is going to be traffic jams. That's not a question, especially during peak hours where people are trying to get to work while they're trying to get to school. It's just the reality, and I think we all live here in York for a reason, because we like the setup, we like the culture, we like our space. So that's what we'd like to preserve, but it's not because of the school, it's just because we think an analysis is due. So I believe that's the viewpoint of our residents. I'm speaking on behalf of them, just because I don't want them to be adversely affected. And I'll give you back twenty seconds, because I don't think we need to have a river of words to explain why that we're asking for this, because this impacts where we live. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Shortridge. Jay Morrison.
Madam Chair, Council, my name is Jay Morrison. I live at 769 T Box Court, York, South Carolina. I'm former president of the Glens, but I had to step down for I had an accident, which I could no longer serve. But in my profession, I'm a GIS specialist, I love your sites. I've looked at aerial photography for fifty years, and where the school is located now, that's a four-lane highway. Where we live is Shiloh, there's no berm, there's no, I feel that a Tier Two should be looked at before anything goes forward, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Tom Flanagan.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tom Flanagan, 753 T Box Court, here in York. I wanted to clarify something that I stated August 16th, and that was the fact that Lake Point Academy has plans for a 400-student building. You all had this as an attachment to the email I sent you on August 9th. Mr. Rogers delivered a "I had a dream" speech about a 400-student school. Page 26 is the future of Lake Point Academy, and that's where they detail that. This brochure was given to me by Mr. Lemon on April 20th, and it details those future plans. You all had that when he made that speech, so I just wanted to clarify that point. I brought it up last time, I backed it up with information. Moving on, I'm retired owner-operator of a preschool daycare for 25 years. I understand the ebb and flow of enrollment, but one thing that is dictated in a school is attendance. You don't mitigate any attendance, you make sure you have absolute accurate records in the event of a fire drill or any other emergency. You have to have it. Anytime an inspector walked into any of my facilities, the first thing they did is went to the attendance sheet. The numbers that have been represented on June 7th, in the Tier One traffic analysis that was submitted, along with the rezoning application, stated that the enrollment was 190 students, and a even split of 50-50 attendance. Fifty would come Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, 50% would come Tuesday and Thursday. In the planning meeting on July 12th, Mr. Rogers stated that they had 210 enrolled, 135 would attend on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. That supersedes what they stated in their Tier One traffic analysis.
Thank you, Mr. Flanagan. I'll give you a few extra seconds there.
Thank you.
Karen Flanagan.
Hello, I'm Karen Flanagan, 753 T Box Court, York, South Carolina. I'm speaking on behalf of the board. We just wanted to bring something up that I'm sure Mr. Rogers will address. On August 16th, we had the meeting with the council, you had the meeting. You had recommended that we schedule a mediation with them, if you will. On August 19th, the board members, we got together, they got together to figure out when they could meet, and that was on August 26th. People have schedules, people were away. On August 27th, our president requested enrollment attendance and staff numbers and volunteers. On August 30th, LPA email answered the enrollment questions and provided the attendance numbers. On August 31st, then they answered the teacher and staff numbers. Because of the Glens' schedule, they didn't feel that they would be able to meet with them, people were going away for the long holiday. So we just wanted to bring that up. Not that we didn't want to meet with them, but we, there just wasn't time in everybody's schedule. I requested Tier Two. I live there, I watch the traffic, there's nowhere to go, it's going to be a jamlock. Even if it was 50 cars, it's going to be a jamlock, but 100 or over 100 is going to be, is going to cause some problems there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Flanagan. Ken Rogers.
My name is Ken Rogers, and it's my privilege to stand before you on behalf of Lake Point Academy and ask for your support for the rezoning. One of the HOA members, board members, has asked, what is it, what's in it for the neighborhood? And so I'm here to share, the board requested, preserve the green space, do not have a parking lot, no additional parking. LPA has agreed to purchase the Cotton Hall across the street to mitigate this issue. HOA board requested to eliminate the soccer field behind the YMCA. Lake Point Academy has agreed to sell the two lots behind the YMCA and to purchase a property across the street from the YMCA to mitigate that concern on behalf of the HOA board. The HOA board has requested that we maintain the Carolina Crossing entrance, so they don't have to spend their money on it any longer. Lake Point Academy has agreed to do such thing. We've bought, we've purchased the YMCA, and we are doing so today. The HOA board has a concern about traffic. The county required a Tier One. We submitted the information, and we've honored the request of the county. The county has put before us the staff a 250-person threshold, student threshold, and we have 205 students today. If we get to 250, we intend and desire to honor the county's request. The HOA board has a concern over financial strength that they expressed without asking questions to Lake Point Academy, and so Lake Point Academy provided a bank of York letter, a recommendation, and to facilitate, show that we have the financial strength to complete the Carolina Crossing project. The project itself is mid-to-low seven figures. Lake Point Academy intends to invest that in Carolina Crossing. As regards, the academy has repeatedly, at the county's request and encouragement, Mr. Roddy and Mr. Winkler suggested that we meet with the HOA board and any opposing members. We've repeatedly, and repeatedly, and repeatedly requested for such meetings in emails, on the telephone, via text, only to be rebuffed repeatedly, repeatedly, repeatedly. I will, I will say it this way, in an email from Tony Elliott, the president, "Thank you, Ken, I have passed this information along to the board. As many times as you have asked, I have asked the board too. They do not feel the need to meet."
Thank you, Mr. Rogers.
Thank you.
Louis Lemon.
My name is Louis Lemon, I live at 3068 Van Hook Drive in York, and for the record, I am the head of school at Lake Point Academy. First, let me say, we're not against anyone, we are for something. We are for our educational ministry and supporting families. You've heard that. When the opportunity came to expand within the county, which was our requirement, we signed a purchase agreement with the YMCA on March 16th, and four days later, Mr. Rogers was knocking on doors in the neighborhood to start a dialogue with the homeowners association. And March, April, May, June, July, we feel like we have sought to share information with the homeowners association. We have held presentations and meetings with various groups to share what we want to do. Transparency is an overused word, we feel like we've been transparent. We've made several concessions in our plans, and quite frankly, they just make sense. Along the process of dialogue, we have purchased additional property and made decisions that cost us a lot more money, but seemed like the right thing long-term. We share an entrance with two neighborhoods, and we want to be good neighbors. The YMCA predecessor, the Jim and Fitness Club, apparently built in 1993, the golf course before that, the pre, come before, the neighborhood, and the Tier Two, ladies and gentlemen, we feel like would cost us burden, but more importantly, time. We would like the additional space to begin, we don't feel that is necessary, and the county staff did not either.
Thank you, Mr. Lemon. Chelsea Paget.
Hello, good evening. I just wanted to say thank you all so much for the nomination to the library board. I hope that it's approved, I'm super excited about it, about the library, I visit the library weekly, me and my family support it, and I'm also looking forward to, you know, serving on the board and really being able to give good thought leadership and strategic focus to grow sustainability and to make it better for all of us. So thank you, and good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Paget. Michael Valenti.
My name is Michael Valenti. I live at 337 Iron Club Drive at Carolina Crossing. I've been there for about six years. I'm a retired engineer from the State of Connecticut Department of Transportation, and I think a Tier Two traffic and impact analysis would be invaluable, because just living there and seeing the traffic every day, the entrance and exit access is limited at best. Maybe I should, you know, before making a decision, I should look into it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That concludes our public forum session. Do we have a motion on consent agenda?
Move to approve.
What is that?
So on item four, we control the advocates for boards and commissioners to move that.
To the end of the meeting. It's our process to allow any council member to remove that, so we'll go ahead and remove number four, and put it as number three and do business. Can we have a motion to reflect that?
Second.
Second? Motion is second. Any other discussion? All those, if ever, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Carrying on, motion passes. Move to our public hearings. Rezoning action. Hold a public hearing and consider first reading case number 21-08, tax map number 714-00005 and 006. Zoning request to rezone from RD1 to ID, 3.5 acres in District One. Mr. Bono.
This application is to rezone two parcels from RD1 to ID. The applicants own the parcel directly across the street, which contains their existing business. They are looking to expand onto this parcel in order to have some additional storage. Here's a preliminary site plan, a conceptual site plan design. So this will be storage areas for their crane equipment and machinery for heavy construction. There'll be some additional parking there as well. So for the zoning in the area, there is no existing industrial zoning in the area, but it is an area that is in transition. The Coltharp landfill is that UD property to the northwest, and as you can see in the comprehensive plan, this calls for I-77 corridor employment, which typically would look for more target industry like manufacturing. However, this is an existing York County business that's seeking to expand, so staff felt it met the criteria for jobs-producing employment uses. So staff recommends approval of this application for rezoning, and by a vote of nine to zero, the planning commission likewise recommended approval.
Thank you, Jonathan. Any questions from council?
Yeah, I do have a couple questions. First of all, thank you, Jonathan, for the information. So this location right here, at the end of the road, there are some homes back there. I know that the TIA study talked about minimal impact on the road, as I read in here, but you mentioned that this is going to be used for storage of heavy cranes or vehicles, or...
Correct.
Okay, so the weight of those vehicles, I mean, I know the traffic volume... Okay, so the weight of those vehicles, I mean, I know the traffic volume will be minimal, but the weight of those vehicles, do you see where we're gonna end up running into an issue where the deterioration of this road will impact the people that live down the road further?
That'd be difficult to calculate. Maybe the applicant has some more information on you about the volume of equipment and the weight of all of the machinery that they have. I don't have that specific information for you.
Okay. And the other question I have is that, since they'd be using that for this type of use, you know, being the fact that these people are needing this to be an emergency exit in and out, the one way into this road and one way out, concerns they have of large vehicle blocking entrance ways to them to get to their home and/or the hours of them operating from within that location. Is there anything you can update me on in regards to those two questions?
The vehicles should be parked on-site, so there shouldn't be any issue with a vehicle blocking that emergency access lane. They wouldn't be permitted to, as in any other area, they wouldn't be permitted to park those vehicles on, on the street for storage. They would have to remain on the site. If any of the residents experience any problems, they, of course, would call the sheriff's office to enforce that. So that's not something we plan for or anticipate, that folks are gonna be willfully violating traffic law.
And hours of operation, I would assume there would be a money through whatever. No, no mention of extended hours at night or lights on or that's...
Not that the applicant has articulated to staff, no.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Jonathan, I got a couple of questions. This is an expansion of an existing business, right?
Correct.
So it's not as if they're starting anything new there. They are, they currently have cranes there. It's the same place. They just need a little bit more land for storage, correct?
That's correct. So you can see they've got their existing site on, across Luckadoo Road there. There's quite a bit of pavement there, so this is a further expansion of that operation. So bigger footprint for more of their vehicles and other types of storage.
Okay. But currently, that equipment is stored across the street?
Correct, on the existing site, yes.
Okay, that's it then.
Thank you, Jonathan. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this request? If you please state your name, give your address, relationship to the applicant.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Nate Pierce. On behalf of, oh gosh, you broke your microphone. Don't hold that against AME. I'm here on behalf of AME Inc. My address is 507 East Main Street, Rock Hill, South Carolina. We are here asking that the council approve the rezoning request. AME is a family-owned business that's been in operation since 1960. They're currently on their third generation of family ownership. As Jonathan stated, AME currently owns a lot directly across Luckadoo on Coltharp, where they are currently storing heavy machinery and cranes. What they are seeking to do is to rezone these two lots off of Luckadoo to create a multi-use building, 50 by 100 feet, and to use the remainder of the footprint of the lots as a lay-down lot for their cranes and other heavy machinery. Specifically, they, they plan to erect, again, a multi-use building on the parcel. Having the additional storage in this multi-use building is going to allow AME to train their workforce on-site, which will be a benefit for them and for York County. The lot that they are seeking to rezone is currently being used by a landscaping company. It's not particularly well-maintained. There are a number of shipping containers that are used for storage. There are makeshift wooden buildings used for storing equipment, materials. There are boats and recreational vehicles on the lot. There are inoperable, inoperative, excuse me, vehicles on the lot. And the fencing along Luckadoo is a split-rail fence with a chained-together farm gate. So AME intends to clean off the lot, fence the lot in, construct this multi-use building, plant trees and shrubs, essentially remove an eyesore and expand a family-owned business that's been operating in York County for a number of years. We'd ask that you go along with the planning commission and the planning staff who have recommended approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them now, or we can wait until after folks speak against.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone who wishes to speak against this request?
Second.
Motion in a second to close public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing non, motion passes. Do we have a new motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion?
The only thing I would say is that I think it's important that we just monitor that road. I mean, with the weight of those cranes, et cetera, the last thing that we would need is causing issues for the residents that live there.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing non, motion passes. Move to rezoning, number two. Rezoning action. Hold a public hearing and consider first reading case number 21-14, tax map number 362-0000085. Zoning request to rezone from UD to RUD1, 10.013 acres in District Two. Mr. Bono?
Bear with me one moment. This application is very straightforward. It's a UD property, which currently does not permit residential development of any kind. So the applicant wishes to build a new home on this lot and perhaps have some horses, perhaps maybe some cows as well. So in order to do that, they would need to rezone their property, and they have sought the RUD1 zoning designation. Staff recommends approval of this. As you can see, the future land use plan shows this parcel for rural residential, so this fits exactly with that. And planning commission felt the same way and voted nine to zero to recommend approval.
Thank you, Jonathan. Any questions from council? Thank you. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone who wishes to speak against this request?
Move to close.
Second.
Motion in a second to close public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing non, motion passes. Do we have a new motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing non, motion passes. Move to third public hearing. Council to hold a public hearing and consider a third reading of an ordinance to amend Section 35.009 of the York County Procurement Code so as to add new subsection 35.009G1Y to include mental health wellness services, including but not limited to medically-related services and counseling as part of the express exceptions to the York County Procurement Code and to provide for other matters related thereto. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve. Well, I thought we were holding a public hearing, though.
Oh, that's right. Anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone who wishes to speak against?
Move to close.
Second.
Motion in a second to close public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing non, motion passes. Do we have a new motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? What is, what is this? David, would you like to explain? I mean, this is a request from the sheriff's department to allow the deputies to obtain mental health services and to be able to approach that and be able to be provided the services in a specific manner. We've already had two readings on it, and management, if y'all would like to add anything to that?
I think you just did a good job summarizing this.
Any other questions? We do have a motion on the floor, don't we? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing non, motion passes. Move to old business. Rezoning action. Consider second reading case number 21-11, tax map number 536-0000101, to rezone from RD1 to RUD, 13.71 acres, council District Four.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion?
Yes. I wanted to ask staff, I know that staff denied this recommendation. I would like to hear from staff as to, are there, is there anything that we can do to satisfy staff to have a more favorable opinion about this rezoning? Maybe look to put in some kind of conditions, making a conditional rezoning, if there was any concern about affecting surrounding neighborhoods?
No, staff's recommendation of denial for this application is based solely on the comprehensive plan. There's no objection on the particular use on the part of staff. It's just that the comprehensive plan recommends single-family residential on that level of designation, and the comp plan is really looking for higher classes of zoning districts for residential development, so beyond the proposed zoning of RUD. And there is existing utility services in the immediate vicinity, and the comp plan also asks that for existing services that can be connected to, that they are connected to, for nearby properties that are seeking to develop. So in that way, you are eliminating the opportunities that you need to extend that line further out into the rural areas in the future when you're utilizing it where it is.
I noticed one of, one of the comments was, and I'm taking this as from staff, that I guess by rezoning, it says eliminate the opportunity to develop a residential neighborhood that would benefit from close proximity to a retail center. But if it's the current owner's wish to do this, and I think, if I remember correctly, was training some horses or something to that magnitude, or not turn into like a ranch overnight, you know, I think it, it should be the current property's owner's right to do what they want to do with it today versus what we think should be done down the road. And I still think the opportunity would exist down the road, but for the current use that this owner wanted to use it for, I, I think it, it wouldn't be in our best interest to say, no, we don't want you to do that with it because we have other plans for your land because they purchased it to do what they want to do with it, when they want to do it. But that still doesn't preclude this land being able to be used down the road for future home development 10, 15 years down the road. So I, I think with, with that in mind, that future use doesn't go away just because they use it for something of this magnitude now, because I don't think there's any plan to erect a horse hotel or something like that on the property. It's just gonna still be basically maybe a barn or, or a horse trail or something on the property. So I would, I would, I would lean favorably to allow this use to go through. And we do have one more reading, so if, if there's any more concerns out of any surrounding neighbors, I would like to hear from them through staff, or if staff still feels that, you know, the future use is better than the current use now, I would, I would like to hear from staff before we meet again. But I'm, I'm all for allowing property owners' rights to do what they wish to do unless it's gonna be a detriment to the surrounding area, and I don't think staff has that concern. No. Okay. So I'll ask my fellow councils to...
I just have a question.
Okay.
So I just, just for clarification for me, it says the rezoning would increase the minimum lot size to one acre on a property where public utilities are available, thereby eliminating the opportunity to develop a residential neighborhood. Does that mean that we are saying that we're gonna increase, I mean, I think my goal in life is to increase property size, acre, property size? So are we saying that by increasing this to one-acre lots, we are reducing the opportunity for higher density?
Yes, and that, that's exactly what this proposal is. It is a down zoning, and the comprehensive plan simply visions differently for that area because of its proximity to the city limits. I think it's maybe two or three parcels away from the city, and because of the proximity of available water and sewer services.
So this, this will basically be restricting a higher density to come to this property?
Yeah.
Something's what you like.
You got, you got my spirit.
Any other discussion? I certainly support the motion. I, I can't imagine why an RUD would not fit that. I'm frankly a little bit shocked by the comments, but certainly support it. Haven't heard anyone come out and object to that, and certainly in favor of less dense, especially when the property owner requested. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing non, motion passes. Rezoning action. Consider second reading case number 21-12, tax map number, great, 448-000002, 448-0000044, Zoning request to rezone from BD1, RUD, and AGC to RC1, 16.27 acres, District Three.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion?
Yes. I'd like to say a few things. One, I agree with something Mr. Roddy said a little earlier, there's a reason we have three readings on this. Whenever we do something, it gives time to, to talk and to work out things. I have gotten a lot of comments and emails and connections from a lot of people in the community over the last week or two, and overwhelmingly so far, most of the comments have been supportive of the rezoning and of Lake Point Academy. Lake Point Academy has made several concessions at the request of the homeowners association. You know, there, there's a little concern on my part from Lake Point on the, the numbers varying between what was put on the application and, and what it is now, and I know school numbers vary. There's also a little concern on my part from the homeowners association because I know this homeowners association fairly well, and I've never known them not to be willing to put a letter out from the homeowners association if they were against something or for something. This neighborhood is pretty vocal most of the time. And so the fact that there's not been, you know, we, we've got some different people that say they speak on behalf of the homeowners association, but we haven't gotten anything written from the homeowners association, so I've got some questions on both sides. But the, the biggest question I have, and, and I don't know if it can be answered in a high level right now because I'm not a traffic engineer, but why did staff recommend a Tier One as opposed to a Tier Two? And what's the threshold between the two? Why, why would, why is there the recommendation at 250 to do a Tier Two? You know, where do we come up with that decision whenever we're looking at any rezoning or what needs a Tier One or what needs a Tier Two?
Yeah, the thresholds are listed in the ordinance and the guidelines and methodologies document that the county has as well. I don't know the thresholds by memory for each of these, but they are analyzed by our transportation planner whenever they come in, as well as Patrick Hamilton, to make sure that they're meeting either the Tier One, Tier Two, or you might call it Tier Zero, where there really is minimal impact, like for a single-family home. Yeah, here's the methodology. So for this particular use, because of the alternating schedule and because of the number that they have in their enrollment, it was decided that Tier One was sufficient. However, if they were a more traditional school that had everyone coming in for every day, they probably would have been asked to do a Tier Two analysis. That's why the condition was included. It was introduced by staff to suggest that should they reach an enrollment threshold above 250, or should they change their style of education where they don't have an alternating schedule, that they do submit that, that Tier Two analysis. So that's why that condition was included.
Thank you. That seems to be the biggest point of contention with everything, so, again, we've got one more reading, and I've still got some research to do on this, but overwhelmingly, the comments I've gotten so far have been supportive and, and, you know, I, I do believe that Lake Point Academy is a better option than many other things that could be there with the current zoning that, that's, you know, on that property, so, so I do support it this evening.
Mr. Roddy?
That leads me to my, my question. What are some of the options? If Lake Point doesn't utilize this facility, what are some of the things that could possibly go there in place of what the school is seeking to do with it?
BD1, I believe, is convenience stores and quite a few other businesses that would probably not be as good neighbors, but, but that's no guarantee that that would come there.
Right.
The current zoning does allow some things that would, in my opinion, be less desirable than Lake Point Academy, probably.
Jonathan, to that point, I guess I do have a question, too. Would, would those other uses require by, out of the gate, a Tier Two? Would, would those other uses require by um out of the gate a tier two?
Again, it would depend on the proposed use. So uh, the I T E, so now we're getting into the, the traffic engineering. This is the manual that uh prescribes the typical amount of trips that are produced by any one type of use. So that is what we base our analysis on. Um, so you know, your neighborhood corner store retail is gonna have vastly different trip calculations than say, uh, you know, a gas station, right? Uh, so it would depend on what is proposed when they come in. So if they had their by right zoning of B D one, they come in for a, a building outfit. Uh, we look at that time to say, what are you putting in there? And if it's a certain type of use that would generate a significant number of trips, they would be required to do either the tier one or tier two based on the I T E trip generation manual.
I've got a couple of comments as well. Um, and I typically like to think that I would side with an H O A in this matter. But the most disappointing thing that I heard was that Lake Point has reached out to the H O A and the H O A is not sitting down with Lake Point. Um, you know, and I do think it's a huge concern of what could actually go here in its place. My grandparents live right around the road, um, so I'm very familiar with the area. I know they have some of the same concerns as well. However, what is currently zoned for would be far worse. And I really can't see Lake Point being a larger traffic impact than what is, than what the Y M C A was.
Any other discussion, questions? I certainly support um second reading and I'll just echo Mr. Winkler's comments. I've had overwhelmingly number of calls and emails supporting this use um from the community. Uh, I do still share the concern about the tier two and would like to have some follow up. And we'll look to Mr. Winkler to um, to lead that and, and would ask staff um to report back to us if any other meetings from the community have happened that, so that council is aware of that before third reading. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Rezoning action considered, second reading, case number twenty-one dash thirteen, tax map number five three five zero 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 one five five, one five six and one five seven. Zoning request to rezone from R C two to R D two, three point six seven acres in district four.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Uh, on to new business. Council to reject all bids received regarding bid number twenty-seven sixty-eight for the Avenue of the Carolinas, Carowens Boulevard intersection improvement project.
Move to approve rejection, I guess is the way to put it.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to have a little bit more details in regards to this.
Sorry, I was coming from upstairs in the overflow room. Um, so yes, this bid came in uh over fifty percent higher than what our engineer's estimate was. And that's extremely high compared to what we're used to seeing. Um, I don't think our engineer's estimate was off by that much. I think it's uh probably a number of variables. Um, also with this project, there's three different funding sources that are being used. One is the designated development funds, which is the tax on carowens. Or a certain percentage of every ticket carowens sells comes back to road improvements in the area. Other source of funding is the water sewer capital project funds to use to do some sewer line extension. And also Carowens Park itself was gonna put in some money to extend the limits of the projects a little further, which is beyond our scope of work. So they wanted to put their own money into it um to make one larger project. Um, and again, the total estimate was about two point five, two point six million. Low bid was almost four point two. So based on that, our recommendation is to reject the bid. We do plan to try to go back, uh, maybe tweak some things with the plan, with the way we bid it and go back out again this winter to try to bid again and see if we can get some more um appropriate bids.
Okay, good. That, that answered my question. Perfect. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Council to consider adoption of York County Council emergency ordinance relating to the continuing and persistent threat and spread of COVID nineteen and COVID nineteen Delta variant and temporarily suspending certain aspects of the rules of York County Council for the conduction of its council meetings, special called meetings, workshops and council committee meetings and related council rules for the conduction of county council business, establishing a remote meeting participation process, including the rules for the constitution of a quorum of council at regular, special meetings, workshops and committee meetings, calling for the application of the remote meeting process to apply similarly to the county boards and commissions and providing for other matters relating there too. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, is there any discussion? Basically, just for those listening, um, this is, uh, we put this in place before and just allows us to participate if folks um are affected by COVID. It allows us to participate remotely. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. We move to number four, under consent. Approved nominated applicants for service for boards and commissions from the Finance and Operations Committee meeting on August sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. Kyle Eller, Bethel Fire Tax, Tax District Board. Jewel Rogers, Bethesda Fire Tax District Board. Marlo Dykes, Bethesda, Bethesda Fire Tax District Board. Anne Witt, York County Library Board, District Three. April Hershey, York County Lib, Library Board, District Seven. Chelsea Paget, York County Library Board at Large. Tiffany Muller, York County Library Board at Large. And Talia White, York County Library Board at Large.
I make a motion to approve all with the exception of the Bethel Fire Tax District Board recommendation. And I would like to defer that um to the um first meeting, council meeting in October.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to go ahead and have a little discuss.
Mr. Aldette?
Yeah, so um, this is, this is more of a general comment and it's uh concern I have across the board as far as how we are moving forward with our, what do I say, um, evaluating our at-large seats. Um, I'm a little concerned that right now, as at-large seats are coming up to be looked at and voted upon. I feel that as a council, I think that we need to do a better job of really looking at it because the impact of at-large seats impacts everyone. Um, Pointon case, uh, when, when we have, and I know this has been a practice in the past when it goes to finance, but there is a concern I have that if, if the voice of the people have expressed concern and made recommendations to other council members, those council members need to express their concern and their uh ask prior to finance, looking at who's the, who's gonna be looked, who are nominated for those at-large seats. Um, I've seen here where the voice of the director, the department themselves may have a stronger voice than the actual council sometimes when it comes to at-large. I feel that our process here, I think we need to change it. I think we need to, when at-large seats come up, to be evaluated on a Thursday when those are sent to finance. I think that as a council, I think we need to review them very well, give the feedback back to finance. And then from there, no recommendation is brought forth, but we have a general discussion and we all decide together out of all the at-large people who we're gonna want to have. I, I see, I see concerns. I see through the process here. I feel sometimes the voice of the people is not being heard and that would be my recommendation.
Mr. Winkler?
I'd just like to say as chair of Finance and Operations, I welcome any of you that want to reach out to me um with any concern or comment or pro or con that you have for anybody that comes before Finance and Operations for a vote, uh, especially if they represent your district. Uh, because I don't know all of these people that come before us. I have to go with just what's on the application and, and the feedback I get from the other council members. So I more than welcome any feedback from anybody sitting up here on anybody that comes before Finance and Operations as far as changing how we do it. I believe I would defer that to Mr. Kendry, but I believe that takes an entire rewrite of our ordinance. Um, and I'm not sure how we would get the feedback from all seven council members before or a vote of whatever, of all seven council members to select somebody before Finance and Operations because I believe that would be a closed meeting, um, which would be a problem with the state, I believe. So, uh, but I would defer to Mr. Kendry on all that. But please, any of us that are on Finance and Operations or me as the chair, please, everybody that comes up, especially if they're out of your district, let me know. Because otherwise, you know, if you don't like them or you do like them, I don't know unless somebody tells me something when I'm up there or one of the other Finance and Operations members so that we can make sure we hopefully get the best candidates for these seats. Because it is very important who serves on these boards and who represents us and our constituents on each of the decisions that come before a board.
I do think it's very important for at-large positions to be discussed because it affects all of us. But I do, I mean, I understand your point of there's got to be a better way to do it. But question is, is how do we get there? Um, because whenever you're choosing someone for at-large, those are getting pushed through. And if you're not on Finance and Operations, you really don't have an input on it. Um, and I know it just feels like sometimes people just get pushed through without really having that discussion.
I'd like to address that. The at-large members do affect everybody, but so does every board and committee member. It's that, e- everybody that we appoint to a board or committee is, has, has an equivalent effect on York County and decisions that are made on those particular boards or committees. Uh, and the at-large committee, I mean, I'm sorry, the Finance and Operations Committee um does vet everybody that comes before us. So what I would recommend to everybody on council is that you look at the um agendas when you get it and you see who's on there. And you especially look and see who's there representing your district. And if you have input on who you want, that's very important to let somebody on that Finance and Operations Committee know that. But as, as, you know, the three of us on that committee, we, we vet every, everybody that comes on there, um, that comes before us. That's our job. And so, um, you know, I just think it's important that if you're interested and you want to, and, and you feel this strongly about it, then you should look at those, those applications and, and weigh in prior to that Finance and Operations Committee. And then we, we do, we just, we bring that before council. Um, Robert does a report and he tells everybody who we've, who we've, um, you know, basically make, who we're recommending. And um then there's time, there's two more, there's, you know, time in there somewhere. I don't think it's a great idea to be pulling things. I'm pulling this, and this, my reason is totally unrelated to anybody that's, that, anything that's been said tonight. So it's kind of like, you know, this, this poor appointees all lumped in with, maybe we're not picking the right people. So it's, that's not the case here. So um anyway, I, I just feel like that the um, the way it's done is, is the best way to do it. And if there needs to be more input, then you need to get ahead of that Finance and Operations Committee meeting.
I'll also add that nearly every time a committee meets, they discuss business that affects the county as a whole and each of our districts. And if we're going to get into the process of voting as a council on topics before they get to committees and then bringing those topics back to council, it really defeats the purpose of having committees in the first place. The committees are designed to introduce matters to council rather than the other way around. Um, but that's all I have to say.
Mr. Winkler?
Quick question, I guess. Um, I'm always open to looking at how we do things and seeing if we can approve them. So, you know, if we were to look at this ordinance and try to figure out a better way, where would that, how would that process work? Would that go through Finance and Operations to look at the ordinance or would that go through one of our other committees or?
The appropriate committee would be assigned and certainly we'd work through it in a kind of workshop fashion within that committee and bring that recommended product back to the county for consideration.
The motion on the table is to approve the, the, the current um individuals with the one carve out. I will say, since we've had, had some discussion on this, I would not be opposed to um at-larges coming out of committee with, uh, without recommendations because once they come, it's very difficult to have that discussion. But um if there's not a majority of council that wants to consider that, then I understand that. I think having them qualified and come out and, and be able to vote on the at-large positions because they are different. I would, I would at least, you know, support looking at it if that's what F and O wanted to do. Um, but the, again, the, the motion on the table is to approve these folks with the carve out. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Two. Motion passes, five to two. Committee and other reports. Justice and Public Safety Committee meeting Tuesday, August thirty-first. Uh, the Honorable Brandon Guffey.
Um, yes, we met with the um Oakdale Fire Department regarding their concerns. We're unable to offer an immediate resolution. However, um, we did recommend to work with the department towards a referendum on increasing their mileage, which was the biggest issue. Um, I know uh Councilman Roddy is very familiar with the Fire Department considering this, his district. Um, and myself and Councilman Winkler visited the department afterwards. So um, we're aware of the issue and hopefully we can get it worked out.
Thank you, Mr. Guffey. Council member new knowledge in the comments.
You noticed my time, right?
I, I was looking over there.
You looked too quick.
Mr. Roddy?
I just wanted to um speak to all of my colleagues and those in the audience and watching on, on the replay or live online. Um, just to bring back in focus what COVID nineteen is continuing to do in this community and across this country. Um, before I even came to this meeting this evening, got a phone call from the school that my son was in contact with someone who um has been identified or tested positive for COVID. At work today, one of my coworker's um granddaughter um tested positive. So we're starting to see more and more of this COVID come back around. And, and this is not new territory for us, but I just want to kind of make a plea to everyone. Uh, if you have school-aged children, continue to talk to them about trying to social distance, trying to wash your hands. And if you're sending your kids to school with a mask, with or without a mask, keep reminding them that this thing is real and we don't want it to, to continue to affect our children because my son now has to be home for um a week or so, uh, but he's been vaccinated.
Ten days.
And so this is, this is causing a lot of rift and uh havoc on, on a lot of families who may or may not be able to stay at home with some of their smaller children. My son is fourteen, so he's gonna be fine. But imagine uh what we're going through with some of our smaller children whose parents can't stay at home. This is really uh becoming a huge issue. Um, but I just want to put the plea out to everyone, continue to talk to your children, talk to your family about ways that you feel comfortable protecting your children and your family. Um, but this is, this is definitely going to escalate even more and more if we don't take uh the responsibility of continuing to educate our children. Uh, as adults, we all know that we can social distance and try to do our part. But our children, you know, they're fun-loving, uh, little feisty ones who like to play and be jovial at school. And so let's kind of keep them in mind when we're, we're going about our day and at home at the dinner table or picking up something in the drive-through at one of our local restaurants. Let's continue to, to talk and educate ourselves through this thing because it's, it's still a serious issue, uh, not only in this state, this county, but this country. So just want to kind of put that in the atmosphere.
Thank you, Mr. Roddy. Any other comments? Well, I do notice we have um Greg Suskin in, in the crowd tonight. I know that I speak for our entire council and I say, welcome aboard. We're excited to have you here. And um, we can't believe we stole you away from Channel Nine. We're glad, glad to see you here and look forward to your contribution to the county. We don't have any citizen concerns? Do we have a motion for executive session?
We do. Move that we go into executive session for the receipt of legal advice relating to consideration of a mediated settlement agreement for Project U S twenty-one slash S C fifty-one, project number one 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 four nine dash zero zero four, tract number one six two. Also for receipt of legal advice relating to a request to authorize condemnation regarding project number one 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 four nine dash zero zero four, tract eighty, along U S twenty-one and S C fifty-one. Also for the receipt of legal advice relating to Fort Mill School District impact fees. Relating also for additional legal advice relating to the opioid litigation update. Um, for the receipt of legal advice relating to Morningstar litigation and for receipt of legal advice relating to Blue Granite. Our county attorney's office has been quite busy.
Second.
Have motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We will move into executive session. Session, no action was taken. Do we have any motions?
We do. Um, the first motion is to associate. The first motion is to associate Chad Zonsen with Willoughby and Hafer relating to Fort Mill District impact fees to proceed with meeting as discussed in executive session and to take appropriate action according to discretion of legal counsel.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
Our second motion is to authorize the execution of a mediated settlement agreement for Project US-21/SC-51, Project Number 11149-004, Track Number 162.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
Our third and final motion is to authorize a condemnation regarding Project Number 11149-004, Track 80, on US-21 SC-51.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.